Hey, guys.
Hey.
Hey.
Welcome. All right, let's bring the Select Board meeting to order. So today, we're going to move directly into executive session. Pursuant, but before we do that, I want to read the Governor's Order pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2021, 22, excuse me. This meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the meeting location listed above in the, in the meeting agenda, and it is possible that any and all members of the public body may attend remotely, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. This meeting may be also accessed via Zoom at the link provided in the agenda. When required by law or allowed by the Chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participating in the meeting may do so in person, by in-person attendance, or by accessing the meeting remotely, as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Verizon Channel 28 and Charter Channel 192, or via Westboro TV's online platforms at westbrowtv.org and YouTube slash Westboro TV. This meeting is also being recorded by Westboro TV for future viewing. And I'd like to thank Westboro TV for doing the work to bring that to the community. So can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Sure, I'll move to enter to an executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 2110, to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive, or other proprietary information provided.
Second?
Okay, and I need to make the motion for our, for the rest of the Chair here. So I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the Board's negotiating and litigating position. This, the Chair, the Board will reconvene in open session after the execution, executive session. And then can I get a roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes.
Okay, we are in executive session.
All right. We're here to reconvene and bring the Westboro Select Board to order. Today is Tuesday, March 28th. I'd like to stand to have a pledge of allegiance for anybody who's able and willing.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
So being that it's past 6:15, I think we should jump to item number four on the agenda, the Class II Dealer License Hearing for TD and J International Motors.
Actually, do you want to read the Governor's Orders just again?
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, that's right. Per the Governor's Orders pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as the members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the meeting location listed above, and it is possible that any or all members of the public body may attend remotely, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. The meeting may also be accessed remotely via Zoom. And when required by law or by the Chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so in person or attendance by accessing the meeting remotely, as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Zoom Channel 28 and Charter Channel 192, or via Westboro's TV online platform at westbrowtv.org and youtube.com/westbrowtv. This meeting is also being recorded by Westboro TV for future viewing, and I'd like to say thank you to Westboro TV and the team for the work that they do to bring this to the community. I just want to make sure Sean's out there, Sean, are you able to hear us?
He's muted.
I think I can hear you, Sean.
No, I don't think there was someone in the audience.
Okay, sorry. Sean, Sean's on mute. There he is. Can you hear us, Sean?
Yes, I can.
All right, just want to make sure technology's working, terrific.
Well, and yes, you can hear me.
All right. Yes, why don't we do that, that's a good point.
Well, I think we should do the, just because we have a public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
6:15, we'll come back for open forum.
Yeah, good suggestion.
Yeah, we will have open forum, though.
All right, so, let's see here, I need to... Do I need a motion to go into, into the hearing?
To reconvene.
To open the hearing, I don't...
To open the hearing, yeah.
So.
I move re-open the hearing for the Class II Dealer's License for TD and J International Motors.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, a roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. So, hearing is now in order. Just to remind the community, this is a follow-up to the March 14th, 2023 meeting. The licensee was invited but did not attend. The Board was provided with the meeting minutes and the materials from when the business was initially licensed in 1997. The licensee did not submit any documents to engage in the process to apply for a business certificate in Westboro as requested. Therefore, the Board decided to schedule this hearing to discuss suspension or revocation of the license because there is no proof that that license has a physical location in Westboro for this business. So we'll just open it up for questions and comments. I don't see the licensee here, or...
No, so we provided notice to the licensee of this hearing on March 21st via electronic mail, which is how we've been communicating with him, and we have not received any response. To our knowledge, you know, nothing has changed. He hasn't applied for, he hasn't submitted any of the paperwork for the zoning enforcement officer to make a determination, and to our knowledge, still does not reside in Westboro.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions? Comments, motion?
No, I mean, at this, at this point, I think that I would, I think that we, I mean, not residing here, we can only license businesses that are here, and so I think we'd be out of bounds doing otherwise. So I would move to revoke at this point.
So I do have a recommended motion in your packet, which was updated actually this week, with a recommendation to suspend the license to be reissued when they come into compliance. So that's, that's my recommendation, based on some discussions with town council, so.
What is the difference between, I mean, I know the difference between suspending and revoking, but I guess procedurally, like what? I mean, to me, it almost sort of puts it in a queue for the town to sort of manage in a suspension mode versus revoking is it's done and that person would have to come back to apply?
Yeah, but just sort of given the fact that we haven't, so suspension is sort of the next step in this because we, that's typically our process.
Okay, yeah.
And so providing is giving a suspension, holding the license until they comply is similar to, I think, what the Board's trying to accomplish.
Sure.
Without taking it away, which would be the next step. Right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I, I, I understand the difference, but looking at the timeline at this point, I believe he's been in Florida for more than six months, which means he's a Florida resident and not a Massachusetts resident even. TD and J International Auto Sales doesn't exist as a business entity. How do you hold the license for an entity that doesn't exist? Even in suspension?
Well, and, and I guess I would add, how long would we hold it in suspension? I guess that would be the other thing, if we were going, you know, is it like a, we revisit this in two months, and then at that point, if there's no action, then we would revoke? I mean, I would more leave it in suspension, you know?
I would think it would be suspension until there's a change in, in the licensee brings forward some new information. They're now residing here, they now have a place of business, you know?
What if they don't?
Then it's continued to suspend, and you don't renew it next year when, when it comes up to a, for its...
Just given that it's the first offense, I would recommend the suspension. We could hold it until the violations have been cured, which could be, you know, however long, depending on how long they're there. I think it's fair for the Board to hold it in suspension until it's cured, and then maybe offer a date at which time you would want to bring that individual back if it haven't been cured, to hold an additional hearing and kind of hear from them what their intentions are with the license.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would, I guess if, if we are, if we move to suspend and we're in the same status when the next cycle of renewal comes around, I would, I would be in a place to revoke it because they've taken no action.
Not really.
It's a defunct business, and let's just get it off our books, basically.
So you can do that, so that won't happen until the end of the calendar year, or you could have them come back, you know, I don't know, I'm making it up, three months, just to sort of see what the status is if they haven't cured the violation.
I, I would, I think it's incumbent upon the business owner to come to us. We've reached out multiple times, but, but knowing that we have this issue, if we're in, we move to suspend, then I would say that, whatever the appropriate, you know, let's revisit this in October-ish, late October, or you said?
I'd say give them three months, I like that idea, or say basically the end of June.
Okay.
Just ask them to come back?
Yeah.
That's not where you were headed?
No, I think, sorry, I would move that we suspend the license. The Class II license held by TD and J International Auto Sales located at 5 Kings Grant Road for failure to comply with 2023 Class II License Conditions and Restrictions issued by the Board of Selectmen, specifically that they're not in compliance with the requirements of a legitimate location in Westboro, and also that they are not in compliance with the conditions and restrictions of the current license that requires in part that they must comply with RMV rules and regulations relative to the Class II Dealer's license and have approval of a zoning enforcement officer. And would ask that we schedule or request for them to come before us at our last meeting in June for, to see if it's cured, and for a potential revocation at that time if it has not been cured.
So are you going to put a time period on the suspension of till June?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
What if they cure the license, the issues prior to that?
They'd still have to come before us, right? They'd have to have another hearing for them to come before us?
So I guess the question, sorry, so I guess my question is, are you doing it until they cure the license? And then if they haven't, yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
That's what I meant.
So we could give it back to them if they cure the license in April?
Yes.
But otherwise, they'll come back in June?
Correct.
For a revocation hearing?
Yes. That was my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second?
Further discussion? Sean, I certainly want to hear if you have any questions or thoughts? You're good, okay. All right, if no further questions or discussion, I'll look for a roll, we do a roll call vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the votes tonight.
Hearing, yeah, all right, that's right.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Sean?
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you.
I move to close the Class II Dealer's License Hearing.
Second?
Roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Hearing is concluded, thank you. All right, so we'll move into open forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at open forum? Come on up, Andy.
Andy Kennington, 3 Smith Street, Miami.
Yep.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm here to follow up on the comments I made during the discussion of the B-Walt article last Saturday's town meeting. I have been saying that we have life-threatening bicycle and pedestrian safety issues throughout this town for many years, but I feel like I'm shouting into the wind. I'm glad that we found a new crosswalk at the Rotary, but did we have to wait until someone's child got hit by a car to accelerate getting that crosswalk installed? I will repeat what I said last Saturday. I walk in sections of Route 30 where the paved shoulder is less than a foot wide. I see kids and families with baby strollers doing the same thing. People who walk into the Route 9 overpass on East Main Street have two choices, walk in the travel lane or through pigeon excrement. When I ride my bike, I have to swerve into the travel lane to avoid catch basing rates. I deal with the same foot-wide paved shoulders everywhere, and the list goes on. I say again, I'd like to see town meeting articles that show the same kind of commitment and funding to bicycling pedestrian safety in our streets as what we're doing for B-Walt. Maybe we can be doing both, but the fact of the matter is, from what I can see, we aren't. In my opinion, you should not be waiting for recommendations from ATSC. If they have not come up with an initiative by now, frankly, I don't think they ever will. If Westboro is going to take street safety seriously, leadership has to come from the Select Board and the Town Manager. Alan Neinberg and I have had this conversation many times. Simply narrowing the travel lane, widening the paved shoulder by restriping the roads would be a good place to start if we cannot afford new sidewalks and fancy bike lanes everywhere. That seems to be too complicated to do here in Westboro, even though it's being done in Worcester, and Marlborough, and Northborough, and Shrewsbury. Paint is cheap. Could you assign Chris Pan or Derek Sari to look at the heavily trafficked roads in this town? East and West Main Street, South Street, Upton Road, Hopkinson Road, Milk Street, Fisher Street, Lima Street, North Street? Then come up with a budget to restripe them to widen the paved shoulder and narrow the travel lanes, which would also have the impact of slowing traffic? Put the whole project out to bid and then come to town meeting with a warrant article, it's not rocket science. While you're doing that, you can also dig up the old plan to add sidewalks to the town that got shelved many years ago, and start figuring out how to put together warrant and articles to fund those as well. As I have said before, what could be B-Walt if the streets are not safe enough for people to ride or walk to it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Can we get a copy of that? Andy, could we get a copy of that? Okay, yeah, if you could just give it to CeeLo so we can all get a copy, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, or you could just email it, whatever, it doesn't matter, okay, we are here.
Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on. All right, go to item three, the municipal aggregation presentation and successor contract. So, Kristi, I'll have you kick things off while Paul comes online. Great, Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you, Paul.
So as the Board is aware, our contract for the municipal aggregation, which is the program that's available to residents for electricity supply, is expiring in November of this year, and we have been working with our consultant, Peregrine, to discuss executing a successor contract, and so Paul is going to make a presentation to you today. And if you're comfortable, can, ask you to consider authorization to sign a contract at this time, a successor contract.
Thank you, Kristi. Paul, if you'd like to go ahead, do we need to get his presentation up for him?
I can pull it up, just give me a second.
Yes, and it says there's, there's one that's marked for the, for the public session.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
All right, and I can begin too while the slides come up. So as Kristi said, I'm here to give an update on the Westboro Power Choice Program, and in particular, the issue of obtaining, providing authorization to sign a new supply contract. Westboro Power Choice is a community choice aggregation program. For those who aren't familiar with it, that's, effectively, that's group buying for electricity. Westboro is one of the 150 towns in Massachusetts that has a program like this. What I'll do today is, or this evening rather, is give a brief update regarding the program. We'll talk about some trends in electricity prices, and then we'll talk about a couple of issues relating to the signing of a new contract. In particular, whether now is a good time to do it, and then the pluses and minuses of a shorter-term contract versus a longer-term contract.
Thank you, can you, I think we can see it now, so.
Ah, so, oh, so that's great to know, so I actually can't see it, so, oh, I can see it. Wow. So that's great, so we can, we can skip ahead to the, a couple of slides from here. Yep, so if I can go to the next slide, please, and the next one. So this gives a, an update on customer participation in the program. As you can see from the graph there, about 73% of the electricity accounts in Westboro are part of the Power Choice Program. That's a very healthy rate of, very healthy rate of participation. Next slide, please. The program offers three options for customers. The options vary according to the price and the amount of additional renewable energy that they provide. The great majority of customers are in the standard or default program offering, which offers 20% additional renewable energy. And then there are optional products where customers can either move to 100% renewable energy for a higher price, or they can move down and have no additional renewable energy for a lower price. And the standard, as I said, has 20% additional renewable energy over and above the state requirements. Next slide, please. And from this one, we can just see how Westboro compares with other communities in terms of the amount of additional renewable energy. Westboro is there in the red bar, and you can see Westboro is in about the top third of communities in Massachusetts on this question of additional renewable energy. Next slide, please. This slide shows the price history of the program, comparing the program price to National Grid Basic Service, which is the primary alternative supply options. The program price is in blue, the National Grid Basic Service price is in red. You can see there that the program provides a long-term stable price. The National Grid price changes every six months, typically higher in the winter months, lower in the summer months. And up until very recently, you can see the program was running a little bit lower than National Grid and providing savings as compared to the National Grid price on average. I should say, and it's important for me to say, that because the National Grid price changes every six months, future savings beyond the point at which that's been set can't be guaranteed. That's a goal for the program, but it can't be guaranteed. Then, going back to the graph, the big change is you can see over the last six, nine months, when electricity prices skyrocketed due to the war in Ukraine, the National Grid price skyrocketed, more than tripled in that time. Fortunately, Westboro had signed, made the good decision to sign a long-term contract for its program about three years ago, and as a result, program participants were protected from this big price increase and actually have achieved very significant savings relative to the National Grid price since the, since the war in Ukraine started. The one other thing to note, though, is that the town's been paying a well-below market price for electricity because of that long-term contract. Now that you'll need to go out to bid and enter into new contract, market prices are higher now, so your price will reset at something close to the market. Not that very high spike in the National Grid price there, but maybe closer to where it is in the red line all the way to the right. So towns achieved great savings over the last three years. The expectation or the hope will be you'll continue to achieve some savings relative to National Grid, but it won't be the giant savings that, that you have now. Next price, oh, sorry, next slide, please. And now, we'll just have a slide that gives an overview of electricity prices. So what this graph shows is the trend of electricity prices over time. These are forward prices, the different colors show the year of the delivery of the electricity, but that distinction's not so important for this. What's really important is just the overall shape of the, of the line. And what you can see from this graph is that prices were low and stable in Massachusetts for several years there. The town entered into its last contract in April of 2020, and prices were low. Coming out of COVID, prices started to creep up, and then with the war in Ukraine, they skyrocketed, and you can see that in the, all the way to the right there. The other thing you can see is that prices have come back down quite a bit. They're not quite at pre-war levels, they're maybe at the wholesale level, a penny or so higher than pre-war, but a lot lower than they were when they spiked up. And this slide, I guess, is really the best one to illustrate the question of, is this a good time for the town to lock in its electricity prices? And I can see that most communities looking at this have said that now is a good time. It's true, there's a little room for prices to come down further, but as the graph illustrates, lots of room for them to spike up if there's a bad event in Ukraine, if there's a cold winter next year. So most communities looking at this are thinking that, that this is a good time to, this is a good time to lock in your next contract. Next slide, please. So these are the issues and next steps. So the first one here is just the one I've been talking about, should you enter into the contract now or later? And then we can go to the next slide, which goes to the question of, for what term of contract? So if we could just go to the next slide, please? And then, right, so then, here, you know, most communities are choosing between a two- and three-year contract now. The advantage to a two-year contract is that prices are pretty uncertain and volatile now. We can have some confidence that how things might look for the next two years, three years from now, it's, it's very hard to know, so a two-year contract is, is less risky. The advantage of longer term is typically prices are lower for a longer-term contract, and then it does provide, you know, extended protection against potential price spikes. And then, next slide, please, we can just talk quickly about next steps. So the next step would be if the, if the Board agreed or wanted to go forward, would be to authorize the Town Manager to go out to bid and sign a new contract. And then, if that authorization is granted, we would go through that bid process, and if the bids were acceptable, the Town Manager would, would sign a new contract. And I think that's, that's it for the presentation.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Okay, Sean, anything for you? No, okay.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then?
I will move to authorize the Town Manager into, to enter into a new municipal agreement, municipal aggregation purchasing program after review of pricing.
Second?
Further discussion? On the motion? No? Mark it, roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you.
Paul, thank you.
Paul, appreciate the time and the help on this.
Thank you very much.
Have a great rest of your night. All right. Move on to item five now? Write a first refusal, 22 Lackey Street?
Yep.
There we go.
There we go.
Perfect. Do you want me to hand it over to you, or do you want me to read the summary, or?
This actually came before the Board last week, or two weeks ago, sorry. The Board has been provided notice of the owner's intent to sell, to sell and convert land at 22 Lackey Street. It's under, it's protected under Chapter 61, and so the Board has the right of first refusal. You have 120 days to act on that. As our typical processes, that we notify the Planning Board, the Open Space Committee, and the Conservation Commission. We also discussed at the last meeting the benefit of adding the Affordable Housing Trust to that list of folks. At your last meeting, you had both responses from the Planning Board and Open Space Committee, and we were waiting for Conservation to, to report their vote, which they did and is included in your packet. And I know there was an additional meeting, I think, that Alan might report on with the Affordable Housing Trust.
So I spoke to the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and just, given the initial acquisition cost, and that this would only be a single-family home, that he did not add it to our agenda for consideration even as it's well out of bounds for our current parameters of a viable project financially for the trust.
Thank you, Alan. Go ahead, do you have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I've moved not to exercise the town's right of first refusal under General Law, Chapter 61, to purchase from Anthony J. Barsamian, trustee of the E. Evelyn Arnold Mask QTIP Trust, the parcel of land containing 1.227 acres and shown as Lot 2 in a plan recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 938, Plan 20, for consideration of $300,000, and to execute and to authorize the Chair to execute on behalf of the Select Board any notice of non-exercise or other instrument to said effect.
Edinburgh, seconds?
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you. All right, are we ready to do site plan review?
Is everybody here for 95 Turnpike?
95 Turnpike?
Are you all here? Okay.
All right, terrific, yes, we'll do, move to that, site plan overview of 95 Turnpike Road. Welcome, come on up, introduce yourselves.
Good evening, everyone.
Do we, I, give a summary here, Sean?
Um, he, so this, this is the former Chateau property, and it, this plan is actually typically, you do a site plan review, this Board is part of that process. You make recommendations to the Planning Board. As a special permit granting authority, this is slightly different. You'll be making your recommendations to the Zoning Board of Appeals. You'll be making your recommendations to the zoning board of appeals. In addition to the applicant being here to make the presentation about the project, our zoning enforcement officer, community development director Fred Lennardo is here to answer any questions.
Terrific. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Gary Sanginari. I'm the attorney representing the developers of this property, and I have with me Alvin Wong, who may be familiar to the board. Alvin's an owner of the property and also an owner of the Mandarin Group of Restaurants. Obviously, a long-time restaurant in town, and Alvin's been very experienced and instrumental in providing the plans that we have here tonight to review. I think everybody's familiar with the property in question, but for anybody that isn't, obviously, this was the Chateau, has a long history of being a restaurant in town, The Naked Fish, Tom Foolery's, and then for those of us that have been around for a long time, I remember The Red Barn. We are anxious and looking forward to getting this property up and running. I think you'll be pleased with what you see on the plans this evening. Jeff Brem, who is the engineer who prepared the plans, is on vacation, and I always say that I'm not the engineer, I'm just the lawyer. I'll do my best to kind of go through what you see here on the site plan. The site itself is as it currently exists, along with the existing commercial building, and you'll see the green spaces that are existing presently. The landscaping to the right are landscaping islands. The parking lot is, you know, as it appears. The main proposed changes that we have to the building, if you could look, you'll see to the, as you're facing the building to the left, which would be on the west side of the building, there's a proposed addition. That area would be a retail store where the restaurant would sell retail Asian food. The addition proposed in the back consists of an expanded kitchen on the first floor, which would be used to service both the restaurant and also to service other restaurants in the immediate area or outside the area, along with a second story that would contain office space for the use of the restaurant business. Over to the right, again, as you're facing the building, you'll see there's an outside patio proposed, so I think all of us enjoy in the summertime being outside, and I think this would provide a good opportunity for local folks and customers to have a nice meal outside and enjoy the weather. So that's the addition on the right side. That would be the east side of the building. I think that's, it's kind of hard to make out what we have at the top, but I think we don't need to go through the zoning tables of what's required, what's existing, what's proposed. Obviously, we're in the permit process now, so those things are being addressed. The seating and parking, you'll see that that's included on the right. There's a reduction, I think, in the total number of seating in the restaurant portion of the restaurant, and the parking spaces are outlined there for compliance purposes. We have, I think, a few other plans as well. Okay, so this is again an existing plan. I think one was shaded, one wasn't. It also shows there's some lighting, which I think is shown on another plan. The poles are shown there, and I think later in the plan package of the presentation, there's some information on the illumination of the lighting. Thank you, Seela. So this shows to the left, again, the existing south elevation, so that's the front of the restaurant as it appears currently, and the east section, which is the property that's located at 93A Turnpike. The existing north side, which is the back of the building, and the existing west, which is, I'm sorry, the west side is the 93A section. So you can see the outline of what's being proposed here. The front facade of the building is up in the middle. Over to the right at the top, it shows the west side proposed addition to the building as well as the addition in the rear. And over to the west side, you'll see as you make your way down. So that's the 93A-facing side, along with the north elevation, and then the east elevation that shows the patio, as well as another view of the front of the building. It also contains the floor plans, and you can see existing floor plans to the left at the bottom. That's how the restaurant appears currently. You know, the plans are to do major reconstruction of the building and to improve it. As you can see on the plans, to the right is the proposed floor plan, which shows the buyer area and lounge, as well as the restaurant, and the additional space in the back of the building, as well as the addition to the left as you're facing the building. And is there a further, another plan on that one, I think, Seela? Okay, this one just shows a little bit more of the plans for landscaping, the greenery's, and that's again the existing conditions of the building as it appears, along with the additions. And I think the last plan might be, is that, okay, that's an existing, that's pretty similar to the others. It does show some landscaping and nothing in addition really to that, and then I think the lighting maybe is on the last plan. Okay. Yes, so again, existing building along with the additions. Those are poles in the center of those things that look like clouds, and those clouds are really the area that would be expected to be illuminated in the parking lot. So you can see those are the poles and the lightning. To the right, as you're looking at the plan, just for pedestrian movement, shall we say, my office is actually located in the building immediately adjoining that parking lot. My personal office within the office actually overlooks the patio area on that side of the building. So I do expect to be probably working late some night and looking over to see everybody else having a nice meal on the patio. There are steps that go down from the parking lot of the office building where I'm located, which is 176 East Main, down into the parking lot. So obviously, there are no sidewalks on Route 9 or on the access road leading to the entrance to the parking lot, but for folks certainly either at 93A or in our building or even the extended stay, there's plenty of access to walk from the parking lot across the parking lot at 176 East Main. They can go down the stairs, they could walk across the parking lot and enter the restaurant that way. So I think there is some access that way. And is there anything further on the plans? I think that's it, Seela. Okay.
Terrific, thank you.
All right, and if you have questions, again, Alvin's here.
Did you want to add anything as well?
I think it should be nice to add.
No, okay, all right. I guess questions from the board?
Want to start? Sure. Yeah, I'll start. So first of all, welcome and thank you for bringing this plan forward. It's exciting to see growth in Westboro, and particularly when there's already an existing footprint, so thank you. I think, I guess the first question is, on the addition on the back side, which is proposed to be kitchen expansion and office space, it's not clear from the pictures. It sort of looks like a box. It doesn't look like there are any windows there, at least even on the second floor. Is that a safe assumption that it's like windowless?
Who's got the presentation? Maybe we'll just go a couple slides.
Yeah, if you could go to the one with all the views.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, so the one there on the top right, that backside looks like...
Section A in the back, right? Has two floors?
Right.
So that's going to be, the first floor is going to be our central kitchen.
Right.
So most of that is actually going to be windowless, but on the second floor, there should be a good amount of windows and sunlight going into that space.
Okay, I would think so. I mean, it's up to you how you want to conduct your business, but it seems like it would be a little dark, so I think aesthetically, that would be nice to the extent that we can comment on that. I was happy to hear Gary from talking about pedestrian access, because I do think that you'll see some nice foot traffic there from both sides of the business, and even case tractors there, you know, just on the other side. So I think that, I mean, it would be nice to see, you know, some purposeful cuts on the, I guess that would be the east side, to provide access to east and west side, so that might be something that as part of the discussion through permitting might be discussed. I had a question, just given the expansion, and I don't know if this is a question for our zoning enforcement officer or for the applicant, how does this expansion address or impact? On the one hand, the package said that the impervious surface wasn't expanding, but you're putting on a building on an existing impervious surface, so I'm just wondering if there's a change, an actual net change? And I know you're not an engineer.
Yeah, so Fred might be able to help out, because I know this is better dressed, but I don't want to give incorrect information, so.
Sure. Fred Lennardo, community development director. No, if you look at the zoning table, there's no net change in the impervious cover of the open space. They can't, well, they could technically, but they'd have to ask for a variance through the zoning board. The ask would be much more, so the intent was to have no net change on the open space.
Okay.
So they've created more green space. They've eliminated some of the parking.
Yep.
Because they didn't require as much with their uses. So the short answer is no, there's no net change there.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that was my understanding.
Yes.
And then, one of the areas, I think, has been a concern even for, well, at least as long as I knew through the Chateau, that entrance, the signage for the proper way to enter that property and that Route 9 entrance that's open is, to me, is, it's really dangerous. It's unclear, are you entering there? Can you exit there? So I think signage is going to be very important, and I'd be interested in traffic flow and how that's going to be managed, both accessing the property as well as exiting.
Okay, and we're working on adding that signage and the traffic flow to our plans when we present to the ZBA.
Okay, yeah, so I definitely would like to see that, you know, addressed. Yeah.
Good point, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Others? Go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, I just had a question, and again, welcome. This is exciting to hear about this and get that building reused. The retail space, if I'm right, it's on the west side of the building. Access to that, right now it looks like there's just a driveway or roadway that goes on, like if someone wants to access the retail store, do they access it through the main entrance and then go in, or what's the...
So we're changing that canopy to be more of a grand entrance, and it's going to split off, so once you enter the building, left-hand side is going to be the market space, and the right-hand side is going to be more so for the restaurant. And we're working on tweaking the architectural plans a little bit, so it shows definitively which space is for the retail and which space is for the restaurant.
Okay, so it's not an access from the west side?
No. If we do the main door.
Okay, I was getting confused, I didn't want people just parking on the roadway to go in, so perfect. And the second question is probably, I'm sure it's probably fine, but I know we had an issue here in town where we had a business that was making food for other properties, and they didn't have proper licenses or agreements in place or grease traps in place. I'm assuming this already, as a restaurant, already has grease trap in there, and that from a use, that this is a approved use to be able to have that kitchen and be able to prepare foods, I guess, for other restaurants, not on-site.
Yes, we've had all the grease traps inspected and the sewer lines inspected as well, and we've also been in contact with the Westboro Health Department regarding this process as well, and in the process of filling out the application fully right now.
Just an additional comment in that regard, we utilized the business one-stop, you know, process.
Perfect.
With Fred and the heads of the other departments in town, which we found, I just would like to say that we found that very beneficial, and everybody was very helpful. We had several meetings, so we vetted all of these issues out, and it was productive and efficient. So just wanted to provide that feedback, and that was one of the things that I think that was discussed at the time through the Board of Health, that we needed to know what process or permitting we needed to go through in order to make sure that we've been compliant.
Perfect, thank you. That's everything I had.
Thank you, Ian. Alan?
A couple of quick questions, a little bit more emphasis on something Shelby mentioned as far as the exit, that comes out almost directly onto Route 9. I see that as a high conflict, even if it's exit-only, because people coming out will not only have to look at traffic on Route 9, but also traffic trying to merge on Route 9 from the connector road. And so I don't know if it's feasible for signage to really direct everyone else to exit on the connector road for both in and out. I also worry that someone coming out of there might realize that they need to go to the connector road. It would make a left and try to cross through.
Can you move to that slide, whoever's controlling?
It's gone back.
It's the one with the, just one of the ones with the...
Right, so it's the left entrance. You know, I worry that someone who pulls up to the exit, if someone pulls up to the exit and they realize they don't want to go west on Route 9, if they're tempted to make the left turn to get back to the access road, we've got conflict.
Oh, it will happen.
And stuff. I don't know if there was a history of problems with this exit with the prior restaurants or not, and I know you're working on signage and traffic flow, but just sort of want to emphasize that.
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, that's the main point of, you know, access in and out to the parking lot. I mean, I can say just, I know from personal experience, having also been occupied, I occupied an office in 93A, the abutting property, and spent a considerable amount of time at the Chateau back and forth. I understand what you're saying. I never saw that it was an issue kind of coming in and out. I think the signage will take care of it. We don't have an awful lot for options in terms of what else can we do there, and it's not a direct access, obviously, to Route 9, and it is that access road. So I think the best we can do is probably with signage, but I haven't seen there been, that there's been any problems with that area in the past, and I know that the Chateaus, you know, they did quite a business, and they had a lot of people going in and out of there. So we will address that with signage, and as we get further along, I guess, in the permit process, if there's some question or issue or things that we need to address, we will.
Can you clarify, then, how the two entrances would be used? I guess I'm trying to understand the traffic flow as it's, as you expect it to be.
This is the entrance off the connect...
Right, and that admittedly, that is, if you're coming off and then you're trying to take a quick left into there, there's a speed factor, there's a turn factor, there are a number of things that are going on there if you're trying to use that connector way that's probably almost as equally as dangerous as trying to slow down coming down the hill to take a hard right into your property. So I guess, could you tell us how you intend to map this, or you envision it from a flow today?
Well, I mean, coming off of, somebody's coming westbound off of Route 9, they come off and they take a left into the access road to the parking lot.
Right, okay.
Somebody's coming out, they're either going left or they're going to go slightly right if they're going west on Route 9. If they're traveling Route 30, then they're taking a left to go out to the intersection of Route 30 to go right or left from there.
So I guess I would put it out there, I mean, and I would look to public... So I guess I would put it out there, I mean, and I would look to public safety and certainly planning and as well as the zoning enforcement officer of, I know no one ever likes to use, miss, or lose, excuse me, curb cuts and openings, but what is the value of the entrance the furthest westbound? It's a rhetorical question, like, why does that need to be there? Because the, from a width perspective, I mean, I think, you know, and if fire trucks are coming in, they're using that eastern entrance. Because they're gonna come through town, presumably, they're gonna take a right in there. So that's plenty wide for public safety. I guess I'm just wondering what is a benefit of that other entrance?
There's also, Shelby too, there's also access to that roadway by the property at 93A, and they have an easement to get to.
You're right, yep. I forgot about that.
To get to that property, so they would enter in that access area, and they would drive straight through to the left and go around, and then.
And then they can, on the backside.
Then they would take a left to go into their parking lot at 93A.
Okay.
And that's actually much easier for them
Than?
than to take the sharp right, which is west of the building
Yep.
as you're going downhill in bumper-to-bumper traffic, and you're trying to come to almost a complete stop to take a 90-degree turn into their, into their parking lot. So they'd be more apt to utilize that for their own traffic flow.
Yeah, okay, no, thank you for that clarification. I forgot about that connection.
And that's because the property was in common ownership, you know, for a number of years.
Oh, okay.
And so.
Well, you have been around for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, so there were some reciprocal things that went on
Yep.
with, with both of those properties.
Understood. Anyway, Alan, sorry, I didn't mean to take over.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, 'cause I appreciate that this is top of mind for you as you go forward. Again, I don't have solutions as far as what the right signage and exact traffic flow, you know, should be for safety, but also note that when the Lyman Street intersection was reconstructed a few years ago, that the placement and the length of the on-ramp from the access road is somewhat different. And just knowing that speeds, you know, might be a little different than they were historically, so. You know, for people leaving, at least people leaving, anything that directs them to go out to the access road, even if they're gonna go west on 9, make the right and then the right, you know, might be, might be a consideration, so. But I trust that will get worked out as you go through the remainder of the planning process with the, with the board. And then my other question was just related to something Mr. Johnson said. A question, will your kitchen be preparing food for sale in the retail store?
As of right now, no.
Okay.
That central kitchen is mostly for our other restaurants throughout Massachusetts.
Okay.
We find that being right on Route 9 in Westboro is centered between all locations. So it's very convenient.
Okay, great, thank you. 'Cause I asked that for a different reason, Ian, 'cause we had a restaurant that was doing multiple locations. We also had a facility that was manufacturing sausages, I believe, without a federal permit for manufacturing and distribution of food products, so, but I assume that's all cool.
As of now, no.
That's a whole other set of hurdles, I believe.
No sausage.
Okay, thank you.
Sean, do you have any questions?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Patrick. Just one quick question. I know typically for these reviews, we're making recommendations to the planning board today or to zoning board. What is the item that brings this, associated with this project, that brings it in front of the zoning board instead of for a site plan review? And that may be a question for Fred.
Sure, Fred Lenar, Community Development Director. So in 2019, we changed the way that was processed. Prior to that, all site plan reviews would've gone through the select board. In July of 2019, I believe it was, or somewhere thereabout, we changed that whole process, that now the SPGA, the Special Permit Granting Authority, is the one that also oversees site plans. Happy to say, or not happy to say, this is our first guinea pig. This is the first zoning board special permit that is also seeing the site plan. So both these gentlemen are our guinea pigs to see how this process works. It's identical to, so normally what would happen is if there is no SPGA, Special Permit Granting Authority, or if it's the planning board, they're the ones that hear this, and up until this hearing, it's always gone through the planning board. So the process is identical to that, and part of the agreement was, or part of the right process, I should say, was that the select board would have the ability to give comment to whoever the special permit granting authority is. And again, in this case, it's the zoning board.
So what was the trigger for special permit versus site plan?
In this case, because the existing building is non-conforming, it's too close to an existing setback, they have to have relief from the zoning board. So albeit the additions will meet dimensional requirements, the existing building does not, so in my opinion, from a zoning standpoint, that's where I determined that they would need a special permit. And the SPGA, I'm sorry, the zoning board will make a determination whether they agree with me or not, and blah, blah, blah. So that was the trigger in this case.
Sorry, thank you, Fred. So the modifications aren't, aren't adding to the non-conformance, though?
In fact, there's some case law, and I've dealt, I've talked to the chair of the ZBA. The additions would have to conform. It's one of two criteria that would have to exist for it to be a special permit. There's still some legal debate whether it's a special permit or variance, but they will take that up. Right now, I think they're in agreement that it's a special permit. It's because the additions will be conformed to the zoning requirements. It's the existing building that does not. That's why they can't increase any of the non-conformities either. Otherwise, they run into other legal problems.
Sure. Sean, other questions?
No, that was it for me. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just echo. I appreciate the work that's gonna go into this property. It's, a lot of the community has asked about what's going on for a number of years, so it's great to see that this is happening. I guess my question's, Ian asked one of mine around the west side of the building, but that driveway on the right side, I don't, I don't think in my lifetime I ever went around the building all the way. Is the intention that that is going to be a one-way road, or is that planned to go bi-directional?
I'm not sure if we've addressed whether there would be some signage that would direct it one-way, but for all intents and purposes, that's really what it's been used for. There's no reason really for anybody other than like delivery trucks and things of that sort to drive around there, 'cause there's access in and out, and the access to the adjoining property is on the side of the building. Somebody can conceivably drive around there, but I've never seen anybody go the opposite way. So I don't think it's been designated as a one-way yet. Something we might consider, maybe when we get into the signage, a little bit further along in the process.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing, I'm just, I'm kinda going back to these front entrance areas. I guess if the ZBA determines that there is a safety issue with that, I'll say the west driveway, whether it's inbound or outbound, I would ask them to consider whether or not that should be one or the other, not both. There certainly, I can see there's benefits for having it inbound, but I also see it as being an easier access, maybe easier exit for people to get onto Route 9 as well, so there's pros and cons to it. But just because of the nature of the traffic right there, especially at that time of the day where people are coming out of work, Route 9 is typically four, five o'clock on, it's backed up past the Jeep dealership. So there's quite a bit of traffic coming down that hill. So I just asked them to consider what the safety ramifications are and whether or not that should be one or the other, but.
Can I have just one more? There's no mention at this point about signage or any sort of that front area, which is sort of, looks like a kidney bean shape there. Is part of your grassiest or greenest space that's visible to the public? Can you just speak to any sort of plans in terms of the sign that's intended to be there, or? Just, I'm just curious, because I would imagine, I guess I'm thinking you'd probably want some height to the sign. It's good for business, right? But also, a low sign could be a barrier for vehicle traffic in that area, so I'm just curious.
We haven't thought about the sign entirely yet, but it would definitely be conforming to the bylaws.
Yep.
We'll definitely consider the height to make sure it's safer, people driving in and out of there as well.
Okay, yeah.
There was a sign there, I believe, previously.
Yes.
For chateau.
Yep.
But they removed it, so I think unfortunately that means we've gotta sort of start over again.
Yeah.
In terms of what's needed.
Well, certainly, I know the zoning and planning board will all take that into, you know, consideration. But, yeah, I think, I mean, it looks like a beautiful building. If the aesthetics kind of around it could match that, I think that that will certainly only help, you know, business. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, well, terrific. Thank you very much for coming in, and, you know, if the law thing doesn't work out, you did a great job presenting, so.
My next profession, yeah, engineer.
Good luck. We're very excited about this, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven. Request to declare items as surplus for the DPW.
So you have in your pocket a list of items that the DPW director is requesting that the board declares surplus, which is required under our procurement laws. This is a pretty routine agenda item for the board, where the, especially with the DPW, where they regularly review their equipment and dispose of it appropriately after the board makes that declaration.
Terrick, any questions?
Remove to declare the presented Department of Public Work items as appeared in our materials as surplus.
Second?
Any further discussion? Sean? Can't see him, so I don't know if he's waving or anything. Sean, can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm all good.
Okay, all good, all right. All right, sorry, was there a second there? You, you seconded?
I am.
Okay, Shelby seconded, okay. Okay, roll call, vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edimer, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Tio, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you. There he is, now I see him. All right, item eight, composition of the Golf Club Building Use Committee.
So at your last meeting, there was discussion, after receiving such a high level of interest from the public to participate on this committee, there was discussion about possibly amending the current composition of the committee. So at your February 14th meeting, when you put this committee together, it included one select board member, the town manager, a designee, the recreation commission member or director, a golf pro, one resident who's a golf club member, and two residents who are not golf club members. And then, as a reminder, the charge of the committee is to present the select board with a recommendation for the space by October 1st. So appointments, all the other appointments have taken place, and so once these residents are appointed, we'll get them sworn in, and we can get going on the, on the committee. Right, so right now you have a committee of seven. You'll wanna keep the committee to a manageable number and also an odd number for voting purposes.
Discussion.
Sure. So I have, so I guess I'll start by saying I think we should increase the size of the committee. I think the question then becomes, how much? I've gone back and forth with the numbers, and I guess I'll say I've gone as high as 11. I think there are pros and cons to nine or 11 equally. I do think when we look at the composite, the current composition, as Christie just shared, we do have, I think we should keep in mind that, actually, let me, let me, well, yeah, I guess it's a little bit, but I think that we do have individuals who are clearly kind of in, of the golfing space and area of interest. So we have our pro, Ian, you're a member, but representing the board, but you do sort of wear all those hats. And, and then we also have our recreation director, who obviously is there, I think, to speak to recreation generally, but I think there's a close connection there to recreation. So I think as we think about the consideration, and if we were to expand it, I guess I'll put forward two thoughts. One would be if it were a committee of nine, we could go with the existing four, obviously, and then the additional five could be one additional golf club member and four residents, non-members, or two and three, so two golf, additional golf club members, or two golf club members, excuse me, and three residents. If we were to do 11, then I would do that as, so we'd be adding a total of seven, so I'd do one and six or two and five. So, I mean, that's a lot of choices for us to discuss. But I'll, I'm leaning toward, I'm leaning toward more residents, like kind of that, you know, the four and six number than the three and five, but I'm interested in the board's thoughts on that.
Go ahead, Alan.
So my big concern with expanding the committee from seven to 11 is, you know, logistics of managing larger committees. And we've had committees of 11, even larger at times, have struggled to get, you know, meeting times where, you know, some of the members can even participate on a regular basis. And so, you know, I'm much more comfortable expanding it to nine. I like the idea of one golf club member and four residents who are not golf club members, realizing that the majority of non-members who put their names forth are also golfers, many of whom do regularly play the course even though they don't have the annual membership. So I think, you know, going from one golf club member and two non-members to one and four increases the committee, gives us more resident, gives us an opportunity for, and I think this is very important, a more diverse collection of views about the broader recreational opportunities, which, looking back, when we first discussed forming this committee, was the majority of our conversation was not to be boxed in by what's currently there, but to explore other options for, you know, how that facility, how that building or that space could facilitate more year-round recreation without compromising the quality of the course. And still, a general feeling from, you know, we've heard from the community that it is a benefit to the community to have a restaurant there. So I'm sort of in agreement with going to nine, but I would feel most comfortable with one golf club member and four residents who are not golf club members, knowing that some of those will also be golfers.
Okay. Sean? Any thoughts?
Yeah, no, thank you, Patrick. I'm definitely in favor of expanding. I think nine makes sense. I agree with some of the comments regarding 11 members and that, you know, larger committees can be difficult to sort of get people to find spots to attend and stuff. Yeah, I thought there was, and it was a good point by Alan, that a lot of those folks who were technically non-golf club members either talked about at one point being members or regularly playing the course. So I don't know that if we add additional non-golf club members that they are in any way, you know, you know, you know, would be able to look at it holistically, and I think that makes a lot of sense. So in it, you know, whether it's two golf club members and three non-golf club, or one golf club and four non-golf club, yeah, I think I'm okay with one and four because that still covers quite a few golfers, so I'm in agreement with folks there, but would still be willing to listen to other arguments. Thank you, Patrick.
Ian, yeah. No, I appreciate the comments. I hadn't thought about it that way, so I'm just thinking about it. I just, I was thinking nine or 11, keeping it the same format, so I was leaning towards either one, but, but being two and three or three and four. I was just looking at it now, I think when we did our, if I got this right, when we did our interviews of interest, we had seven golf club members, six showed up for the interview. we had seven golf club members, six showed up for the interviews, one did not. For the non-golf club, we had twenty-two that applied and eleven showed up. Um, so fifty percent of those showed up. I just said if, so if we pick one out of the six that showed up, if we decide that we lean towards those that put in their information, but also either showed up for the interview or notified as they could and submitted a written comment of their, um, of what they would have said if they were there, you know, one out of six would be a sixteen percent. We chose sixteen percent. Four out of eleven would be thirty-six percent. If we went to two out of six, we'd be at thirty-three, basically both around thirty percent, so.
Okay.
But I don't think, quite honestly, I think as everyone said, I don't think it's a big deal. Because I really don't, it's not about the golf courses, it's about the building.
Right.
Um, and I don't think that I heard from golfers, or have heard from golfers, that this is about a golfer's facility. It's, it's, it's really about a, a part, a portion of it, of course, like it is today, is a golf facility, but, um, the bigger portion is, is, it's a town building, it's a community facility. So I, it sounds like the board's going one way. I am fine with going one and four. In that, I think as we said, folks can, um, you know, hopefully all the people that are interested, uh, come in there. I'll tell you just, firstly, while we talk about numbers, I will say the one thing that I was hoping to hear in the interviews that I didn't hear, that I, that I would say, and is part of my thing of being in here, is, is really on the financial aspect of this. I'm really looking to do what's best for the town, but do it in a way that we can hopefully fi, figure out a way to do it that doesn't cost the taxpayers any money, is what sits in my mind of a, a way to make it the best for the town, but do it in such a way that it's covered one way or another.
I, I, um, Patrick, I know you haven't had a chance to comment, but just, I, I think, I heard from, and I know we're getting to the next agenda item here, but I heard some of that, I'll call it creativity, from some of the applicants. Um, and, and so I totally agree with you, Ian. I'm sort of like, how do we, how do we do this? And.
The best way possible for the town.
Right, right. Um, so, um, I will say that, um, I, I think that we had, well, I'll say my comments. Go ahead.
Okay. So I, I, you know, when I look at the numbers here, I, uh, first of all, I'll say I'm really, uh, I was really thrilled with the, uh, volume of, um, of applicants, um, both from the golf, uh, golf membership as well as residents without the golf membership. Uh, it was fantastic to see, and I think it certainly does warrant a, uh, uh, an additional increase to the, uh, to the size of the committee. Um, I would be more inclined to go with a nine-person committee over an eleven. Uh, I think eleven can be a little bit overwhe, wielding, but also with a nine-person committee, um, you know, it allows us to expand, I think, based on the percentages Ian just outlined as far as the applicants. Um, it's appropriate, I think, for us to go to a one and four, one additional golf member and four residents. Again, some of, many of them are also golfers, uh, or past golfers, so. Um, and I am excited to, um, see a variety of ideas come out of it, uh, because I think it really, there's an opportunity there to really expand the use of that building, um, for more, I'll say, inclusive functionality across the town. Um, so I'm, I'm really eager to hear what this committee comes back with. At this point, I don't have any further questions or comments unless anybody else wants to add in.
So the only other thing I would say about, I mean, I think we should consider that, um, as we think about the number on the committee, that this is a pretty intense timeframe, right? We're asking for this to be done by October, so to the majority, what I'm hearing, that would, I, I think, would suggest that a smaller committee makes it more nimble and effective to do that. On the other hand, there could be a fair amount of work to be done, and there, there may be some benefit for, from, from additional people. Alan, I see you're saying no way, um, from your grimace, but, um.
So in my industry, the rule of, you know, software is if you have ten people working on a project and you want it to go faster, you add five, it takes twice as long, right? But that's not necessarily the case here. That was my chuckle.
No, 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 no. Um, I, I think, I, before we go into kind of talking about specific individuals, I just think that this, the number is really hard for me because of the talent that we're seeing before us and the interest and what everyone brings. And I think that, um, um, you know, I could be, if we're, if we're at nine, I could, I could be convinced with some conversation that, that composition of those five should be two and three. Um, because I think that what we saw, even in the golfers, that they brought forward a, um, really well-rounded, um, kind of professional experience. Forget the golfing, like the passion for the golf, the, the experience that came forward from that group was, was, uh, very unique, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess on that thought, uh, two, two thoughts come to mind. I guess one thing is, you were speaking there, Shelby, that made me think was, one of the benefits, and I'm still in the nine, the, the nine camp, um, of going to eleven is that we're also, these people are going to be meeting throughout the summertime, right? So people are going to be going on vacations and it's summer and how involved, hopefully they can be as involved as possible, but is a larger committee going to provide more regular attendance and discussion, uh, at it? But I, in thinking about it, I think nine is, to me, is still the right fit. Um, I, I feel one and four is the right mix because we've got a, a, a pretty good field, I'll call it, uh, uh, players, uh, uh, in, you know, representing that golf community. And again, that percentage of who applied, um, that ratio was, you know, basically one to four. It was almost exactly one to four. So, um, it'd be, to me, that just makes a lot of sense to get more, uh, community. And I think.
One to three.
One to three? There was twenty, I had twenty-nine, twenty-nine to six, but.
Seven to twenty-two. Twenty-nine in total.
Okay. So, um, yeah, so.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
My numbers, guys.
Uh, yeah.
(laughing).
So, um, and I saw such a great range, people who are new to the community, people who have been a long time, people with financial skills, you know.
Neighbors of the area, not neighbors of the area, and that's great.
Exactly. Yeah, so, um, so anyway, that's my thoughts. Any other thoughts?
I would just say that I think that we can, you know, this is just the, the reuse committee. Um, depending upon what happens, there could be a whole building committee that would need to be formed, which is separate and distinct and different talent set from this, so. If, if the building were to be.
I, I mean, we have a standing municipal building committee, so we would have to talk about that.
Right, and I would want to. So I'm just putting that out there now.
Okay. Yes.
Anyway, that's all for now.
Yeah, the, the municipal building committees are not appointed by the board, so we would have to have that discussion.
Right.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So I would just say, I mean, my, I'm going to go with the board decides. Um, Shelby just, I mean, I, I don't know if I said it last time, my thinking is that it should be two and three, but I am not going to, to fight it. Um, if the majority of the board goes one and four, I might think that we have, we have a ton. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna leave people off here. Any way we do this, we're gonna leave people off that would be, um, great on the committee. So, um, my preference would be two and three. But, uh, so anyways, I, I agree with going to nine, first off.
Yeah.
I think we do need to expand it, um, you know, and, uh, I would prefer two and three, but I am fine going one and four. So I'm not going to make the motion.
How many, how many motions? I move to amend the composition of the golf club building use committee by adding two residents who are not golf club members. Which takes us from the one and two to the one and four.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that would be, that would change to one and four?
Yep.
Okay. But you didn't change the num, you said, okay, yeah, you changed. And Sean seconded, okay.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay. Roll call, vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edimer, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Kio, yes.
And Welch, yes. Very good. All right.
Okay.
That was the easy part.
I was gonna say.
Okay, so I'll, I mean, I'll open this up for conversation and people can make motions on, uh, people who've, applicants, as they see.
I, I guess I suggest if we start with the golf club member.
Yeah, let's start with golf club member. Yeah, yeah.
Give the discussion to that group, and then we can maybe.
No, that's a good point. Yeah.
Um, you know, I guess I'll start, first of all, I want to thank everyone for applying and expressing an interest, for those that sent in detailed letters, doing, you know, memos of their interest in wine, their background, and how it applies. Appreciate that, as well as for those who came to the meeting and presented us directly. When I, um, when I think about, you know, is it, you know, to represent the golf club, um, that it's not just about, you know, the pro shop, you know, pro shop restaurant, that it's about, still about broader use, it's about an environment that still supports, um, a, a healthy and vibrant golf club and quality of play there as well. Um, I, I felt that there were, you know, two, two, three of those, um, applied who are members who really stood out. Um, and one in particular also, I think, brought in the financial side, um, with experience in project finance, um, and operations. And so I have a, you know, a preference for, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to make the nomination yet because I, we're discussing, but, um, I felt that Teresa O'Day really stood out, um, as did, um, John Green, given his background as well. And so I, I would, you know, those are my two finalists, I guess I would say.
Okay.
And, and if there's, um, a slight pre, if there's a preference in, in those two for me, it would be with Teresa, um, given the financial background. Um, and I think it's, I'm, I'm not saying we can't have a butters, but I think aspects of this discussion will be easier that way.
Okay.
I'll jump, I'll jump in, and, uh, because I have, similar to, to Alan, Teresa Terri O'Day, I thought was great. I thought that, um, I was impressed with her application letter, I was pre, impressed by her preparedness for, um, the interview and exactly the same, I won't even add, it was exactly the same thoughts that Alan had. I had John Green as well, um, because of his construction background, what he showed us and what he's done in terms of rehab, his thoroughness of reviewing, um, the, um, report that we had there and, and thoughts that. I thought from, uh, that brought something, um, that I thought was unique, uh, from, at least those we interviewed, I think in the non-golf club, we had at least one that has that background, but we didn't hear from them. But that was based on the, the, their actual application. And the other one that I had was, um, was Dan Flood, and that was more, not that he said it in the meeting, just knowing personally his background, that, um, you know, understanding the, the restaurant business setup, that type of stuff was just, um, you know, something that if, and that is one of the pieces that was out of the, the four recommendations for this committee is, you know, addressing any level of food service desired would be there. But, um, so those are kind of the three, but I think I probably brought them in the order that I had them ranked, is how I discussed them.
Just to note that John Green did fill out a conflict of interest form because he is in a butter.
And he did, you said.
He did.
I don't think, can I, can we look at that just quickly?
Sean, you have any comments?
Well, hey, thank you, Patrick. Um, yeah, some, some strong candidates. Um, I think I agree with folks' comments. On Terri O'Day, came very well-prepared, uh, does have the finance background. I also appreciate all the work that, that Katie Welch has done at the golf course, having been a longtime member of the operating committee, has a really strong understanding of sort of the operations of the golf course. Um, so felt like she brought something as well, just to throw another name into the mix there. Um, but, you know, I don't, I don't think we're going to go wrong here, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, I had, uh, I had four finalists on my list. Um, Teresa or Terri, uh, I don't know her personally, but I guess she was by Terri, Terri O'Day, um, was one of my finalists. Katie Welch was also high on my list, and, and John Green was as well. Uh, and I certainly, uh, agree with, uh, the, the, the perspective from Ian in regards to Dan Flood and that restaurant expertise is certainly would be a help. My, the, the strongest two on my list were, were Terri and, and Katie Welch. So, uh, and there's no relationship between myself and Katie.
(laughing).
Um, maybe I should sign a disclosure for that. I don't know. So, uh, but, um, any other comments on the candidates? Uh, hard decision here, but.
Yeah, so I, I would just add that my, um, I agree with all the comments that have been made. Again, I think to Sean's point, we can't go wrong here, but I, I was struck by Terri's preparation, um, her presentation, her financial experience, her ability kind of to think about strategic sourcing, planning and capital investments. I really liked that. Um, I, I know from, um, kind of personal experience to the women's club that she's a doer, she gets in there, and she, she does the work, so I've kind of some, um, experience there. I'm very impressed with John, uh, Green. I think that his, um, uh, you know, his experience in renovating a historic building and, and understanding, I, what struck me is his words about highest and best use, um, was, you know, really resonated. So they were my top two, um, while certainly understanding that, again, the others certainly, uh, would, would do a great job as well.
All right. Any other comments?
So, um, I, I guess I would just ask that maybe, I mean, it seems like Terri and John are sort of the leading, uh, by, my notes here, by majority, if you will. I don't want to make, certainly not making a decision, but, but I think that, depending upon how that goes, can we table them and then talk about the other, the non-golf club members? Because I think that's, some of the non-golf club members bring in.
I agree.
Some expertise, like, we'll just talk about financials. So some, some of the other, um, non-golf club members had strong financial experience as well. And so that, depending upon how.
So do you want to see where we land completely on who we select for non-golf members before you choose?
Well, I'd like to have the discussion. I'd like to have the discussion at least, and then kind of, before we just choose the golf club members. I don't, I don't know the board's, board's thoughts on that.
Do you want to start us off then?
Well, I don't know.
I know, I absolutely agree, because I was thinking the same thing, because I think that, we're trying to round out a committee, and I think if, there are a number of things to consider, and I think seeing what the, talking about them all, I think can help us construct.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, do you want to start us off, Sean?
Oh, sure. Um, so, um, I, I thought that, um, um, again, what, what was interesting about the number of candidates that we have to look at here is a variety of things. Their time in town, their, their experience on other boards and committees or not. I mean, this is all sort of like yin and yang, seesaw, um, if you will. Um, but I'll, I'll kind of cut to the chase here. So my, my top four in, uh, for non-golf club members would be, um, Marashuni, Shuny, excuse me, um, Brian White, Felicia Weitzman, and, um, uh, Skip Ashton. And he is also in a butter.
Skip Ashton is in a butter.
Across the street, right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Did he put a?
Yes.
He filed, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, he filed a conflict. So what we're, just so the public knows, that, um, anyone with a conflict of interest was asked to sign a form.
And the board will have to vote in addition, if you do appoint someone who's in a butter, you have to vote in addition to their appointment, you have to vote to accept these.
Um, so, can I, um, can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
Um, so, do we have any more information? Because obviously it has a financial interest in the matter, was checked by. matter, was checked by him and, um, a family member has a financial interest in the matter?
That's all the information that we have?
Check.
Turn the page.
No, I mean, other than, you guys can look at that.
As in a butter, you're presumed to have a financial interest, so if it's owned by him and a family member, then they would both have a financial interest. I don't know that that's the case with him, but I.
Right, but without an explanation, we may, we're left to presume that, okay.
So even John Green, would, we would have that presumption?
That's the presumption of why they have to file the form, or why we ask them to file the form.
Makes sense.
They're presumed to have a financial interest.
He grew up, this is saying that he's a direct butter because he lives across the street and grew up in the same location.
Right. So.
And that the benefit to him is that the property be ongoing and healthy operation.
So.
So. Did you have other thoughts, or did you want to move on?
No, let's move on.
All right.
So, um, so my, again, looking at the mix, um, and one of the things that I thought was really, um, encouraging were, um, a number of the folks who applied haven't been in town that long, but are anxious to get involved, um, in bringing different perspectives to the overall use of the, of the building and the property. And so, you know, my, um, top four were actually, and, and I did not do a good enough job noting how to pronounce her name, so I apologize if I get it wrong, but Manaz Khoury.
Hulabey.
Pardon?
Hulabey.
Manaz Hulabey?
Isn't her last name Hulabey?
Hulabey? I'm sorry, I copied and pasted it wrong. Yes, Manaz Hulabey, and, um, Felicia Watzman, Brian White and Skip Ashton.
Okay.
So I really got the last.
It's like John Travolta at the Oscars.
I'll put a dollar in the stupid stadium.
So, Shelby, Shelby stole my thunder, um, had the same, top four, I also had, I mean, not knowing where we're going here, I actually had, I actually had six.
Yeah, well.
The other ones, one actually, uh, was Manaz Hulabey, if I, Manaz Hulabey, if I got that right, the other one was Kyle Ritchie, um, but I think, um, when I looked at it, it was, um, Skip, longtime resident, planning board experience, um, in the past, um, Maura Shuni, similar thing to Terry O'Day, um, I thought came in very well-prepared, answered the questions, um, person I know more, I mean, another one like, you mentioned Terry, I've seen more work and she just drills up her sleeves and gets things done, I think that'd be a valuable asset to, as we talked about in this committee, to move it through quickly. Felicia, um, I just thought she was, um, new, but I just thought her presentation was great and someone new to town and really taking interest, I was impressed by that. And Brian, you know, what I wrote down in my notes was he really pushed on the accessible, it was kind of pushing back on, um, someone said, you know, wasting the money and saying that's not a waste of money, something we need to consider, I thought it was, that was one that was unique, I guess, that's why I wrote it down in my notes, was he was unique in that sense and I thought of thinking more broadly about, um, the facility, so, um, so that's my talk at this point, but.
But, I agree with you on, on Brian White, what also captured it is that, you know, when we discussed forming the committee, we talked about, you know, a variety of potentials.
Yeah.
And so it was clear that he read the full report, but also had, you know, heard the message about making sure we're not myopic.
Yep.
And it's okay to explore things that we decide we don't want to do on that property.
Yep.
And, and, you know, head down those paths and spend the time doing that to see if other things are feasible as well, so.
Sean?
Uh, thanks, Patrick. Yeah, so I had, uh, similar names, um, and the main part of what I looked at was, you know, and expecting that you were going to add names, was looking at this broadly across, residents who've been here for a while, residents who are new, um, at least one individual who had young children and maybe weren't even of golf age yet, and so what they might see in this property and for their families, um, so just a lot of opportunity across, um, a broad spectrum of, of folks we have here. I had Skip Ashton, I also like the fact that Skip helped with the master plan update and I think as we're looking at the master plan, you know, this is a piece of our broader recreation strategy and, and update within town, and so, you know, where does this single building fit, but where does it fit across the recreation capabilities we have in town currently and making sure we're looking at that holistically. I liked, uh, Manaz Hulabey, um, I also liked Kyle Ritchie, um, I had, um, had experience with Maura Shuni, she, she does do a fantastic job, um, things get done, so support that choice, um, as well as Brian White, so I, so I gave an extra one there, but, um, sort of covering, you know, the same folks everybody else did.
Eleven, eleven.
With those candidates, so.
Can we reconsider that vote again?
No.
I can go to thirteen.
All right, Sean, thank you. Yeah, uh, you know, I'll just say, it's interesting, I, a lot of similarities here. My top four were Manaz Hulabey, um, I just thought she was well-spoken and, and, uh, I, I thought her, her, her letter was, was a good letter. I had, um, uh, Maura Shuni, Felicia Watzman and Brian White. Skip Ashton was in my near top of the list, um, and, yeah, so that was, that was my.
Who were your four? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Manaz Hulabey.
Yep.
Maria Shuni.
Yeah, Maura.
Maura Shuni, sorry, I gave my own handwriting here.
Yep.
Uh, Felicia Watzman and, or Watzman and Brian White.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Ms. Moore.
And so, I, you know, if I, if my count's correct and certainly all, uh, double check me here, there's a, a few people that I think were, seem to be unanimous on, um, Brian White.
Felicia.
And, uh, was Felicia as well? Sean, you, you, did you say Felicia as well?
No.
No, okay, yeah, so Felicia.
No, I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed, she's also an excellent candidate.
So that's really the only, uh, I think unanimous.
So, one thing I think we should consider, um, to the extent that it may be relevant, I mean, even when folks sign a conflict of interest and, you know, understand that and they declare that, we may want to consider as a total committee, um, the number of butters that we have, um, because right now of sort of those that we've top-listed, John and Skip are both butters, I think that those are the only two, and, and so we, I think that, I think that does carry weight, I, I think that, um, again, I hate to say that because I don't really want to eliminate anyone, back to eleven, um, but I do think we should, you know, as we look at the whole, we should consider that.
And I also, you know, and we've all talked about this, I think that, um, it's important that we, you know, the comment was made, you know, as people were presenting to us that, you know, having in a butter is not a bad thing because it represents a segment of the community, is, is I look through this, um, you know, these names and, and I also see that there are different people in here that definitely different, connect us to different aspects of the community. And, you know, and, and so I look at, you know, Felicia Watzman as, you know, she really beautifully said, she's there for the families, right, and how can this be something that's, you know, for the families, I also think Manaz Hulabey connects us to parts of our community that aren't always well-connected as we put together, um, committees as well, and that her network could bring in additional ideas and, and input, um, you know, off this list, so.
See, the, the other person I, I thought was sort of a, a leader wi, is Maura Shuni. I, I thought that we all had, I had, I think we all, except for Alan, I'm sorry, okay, you didn't, sorry.
Darn.
Can I make a motion just to start us off?
Sure.
So, I would, I would make the motion that we would, we would appoint as the golf club member, Terry O'Day, and for golf, uh, non-golf club members, Skip Ashton, Maura Shuni, Brian White, going back and forth on those last two, but, um, uh, Felicia Watzman.
I'll second that for the purpose of discussion.
So you've removed, you, you've gone one in, uh, one a butter with Skip.
Yep.
With Teresa, non-a butter, instead of John.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Comments?
I think one of the, just a note that I had, um, I thought Felicia was, um, I liked her, you know, energy and kind of that she was, stated she was open to ideas, she doesn't come with an agenda, she's really, I think she's the one, she's recently here from Chicago, and, uh, strong desire to be involved in community, um, so, I don't know, there was a, there was an energy there, but I think Manaz as well had, I mean, really strong project experience, financial experience, technical, um, not that this is a technical, but you could see, um, her experience in working with teams.
Project management is what I.
Project management, um, I think, you know, seeking community feedback, that objectivity, um, and I loved her comment that, you know, she sees opportunities for small change with a big impact, so that kind of speaks to also Ian, your kind of, like, how do we do this and get the best with the least sort of financially to the taxpayers, so.
I, I guess my comment, you know, Maura Shuni is without a doubt a volunteer powerhouse within the community, her, her history of involvement with nonprofits and on other boards and committees has been, you know, phenomenal, um, and she's, you know, she's very well-connected to, um, a fairly large selection, you know, fairly large representation in the community. I, I see, to a lesser extent, others we're nominating having some of those same connections and I, um, she would be phenomenal on the committee, but I think we have an opportunity to, if we want the input and the viewpoints of the broadest representation, then I think Manaz brings to the table connections to, to that broader representation, um, from the community and, um, you know, it's, this is not easy, folks. I, I even feel bad that these folks are probably watching this.
I know, right?
Hearing us discuss them in public, it's part of the process, it's, I've been on the other side of this and it's grueling and I appreciate them, you know, hanging in with us on this. Yeah, I, I, I really like Felicia Watzman's viewpoint and the perspective she brought and the energy, um, and her very quick level of engagement and involvement within the community and sort of brings a perspective from outside the bubble, if you will, um, you know, and, and, so I, I, I think it's about, if we want the broadest possible voices and input into how the building gets reused, I, I would still feel that Manaz would add a lot to the committee.
I don't disagree, I had a tough time, I guess in my take, I was looking at Manaz versus Felicia, um, was kind of my balance, so you're saying Manaz versus Maura.
Nothing personal, Maura.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, I think, I think what, um, Maura was a clear leader to me because she's been, for all the reasons you said, Alan, but she, I think she knows how to go in, look at a complex project that's going to have lots of opinions, um, and she's worked within, you know, I'll call it formal and informal committees, um, and, you know, again, the compressed timeline of this project, I think she, she, I think the committee would really benefit from having that experience, um, there, um, and, you know, I, I think we all, we've said it a hundred times, right, there's, there, there will be, and we, the expectation is that there's an opportunity for input, so anyone that's here that isn't selected, that wants to, um, attend meetings and provide input and participate in surveys and whatever else the committee decides to do, there's still certainly opportunity to do that, so, I think, um, you know, I, I think it's, I do think it's relevant for that neighborhood to have someone from the neighborhood participate, I think that that's, that's important, um, and I'm going to trust that whoever, if, if we go down that road, that, you know, if it's Skip, that, you know, he can be objective in his approach, I think that, you know, he's served on other committees, so he understands the in-town, so he understands the importance of that, um, I, I guess, you know, my, I'm not making an amendment, but, you know, I, I was right in line with you and, I, so I'm there with Terry, Skip, Maura, Brian, and, and I really, for Felicia and Manaz, I could go, I, I really could go either way and, and I mean, I think they bring very different set of kind of experience, um, both of which would be equally valuable here.
Sean, any comments?
Um, yeah, yeah, I, I agree, we're, we're going to have to, you know, so I guess that's another concern, um, you know, it's, somebody who's very qualified isn't, you know, isn't going to be on it and that, and that's, you know, I guess, and, these are good, good problems to have, is what we're trying to say, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with what the folks, what you guys have been saying, I think, um, you know, I, I really like Manaz, I think she, her capability does overlap maybe a little with Terry, um, and you also have the fact that I think Felicia's more, maybe more generally available to the committee and I assume, yeah, I guess one of these things to consider, and I don't know, the people are aware, this committee's probably going to meet during, during the day and weekdays, is that the expectation?
We have to figure that out, Sean.
Does that cause an issue for folks, so, um, but, um, you know, I, I'm comfortable with any four of those individuals, sorry for the cop out.
What, what four, Sean, I'm sorry, because, because I, I mean, I think we're, we're swirling around five.
You're talking about the motion, so.
Oh, well, well, so I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, Terry is, is the golf representative. And then, you know, we're picking four out of five really here, right, and, and I know whichever of those four that we select are going to do a terrific job, you know, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, one of the individuals we're talking about is not on the committee.
Okay. So I, I guess my thoughts on this are, um, I, Terry, I, I did have Terry O'Day higher rated in my own scoring over John, John was right there, very close, um, so I think that makes sense from my perspective, um, and that leaves. And that leaves, and I certainly do see the value and the need to have an a butter as part of the committee, so that leaves us with Skip. So that makes sense to me. I guess that, you know, when I go back to the conversation between Manaz, Maura, and Felicia, you know, Shelby, listening to what you were saying, I, those skills that you mentioned are, are important, but I also see that those skills are also available through Ian, Christie being on there, is, you know, they, they know how to run these meetings, they know how to keep things going with a variety of new, new folks. And I, I think having a broader range that brings more, a wider touch across the community is really important. Matter of fact, that was a topic I heard, there was a bit of a discussion about it at our master plan meeting last night. So I think it's, I think it's really important that we do that. So for me, I would be more inclined to support Manaz and Felicia over, over Maura.
So what would your four be?
My four would be Manaz, Felicia, Brian, and Skip. So we'll just change Ian's motion by one.
So the one thing I'm just going to put out there, and this is going to contradict what I just said, is, I think all of us heard, and I understand the conflict of interest forms and people have to individually submit them, and it's up to them to do that, and that with allowing a direct a butter with a library project to have such a strong voice in matters on a, on a committee, that, that was of significant concern to many people. So I, I'm asking myself as I'm asking this question, is there a way to, for the committee to seek direct a butter input as part of their process and their, you know, kind of their charge, not their charge, to change a charge, but just to what they do, and achieve that, and, you know, kind of honestly just avoid any sense of potential conflict that we saw with the library project to someone that has an a butter, to some, you know, to an a butter. So I feel like I have to raise that.
And I.
Go ahead.
Skip Ashton was on my list, even as an a butter, because I thought of what he brought to the table. I don't feel there's a need to have an a butter. I do think there's a, you know, there is a potential for appearances or question about I'm, I'm comfortable with the process for conflict of interest. The situation was, the library was different, the individual didn't submit the forms prior to the discussion, whereas we have, we have the forms of.
Sure.
But.
And he's served on many other committees.
Right, and he's served on other committees, so.
Yeah.
But if you're thinking that it's Maura Shuni, Brian White, Felicia Vatzman, and Manhaz Halloway, I'm very comfortable with that as a slate, and the representation for the committee. I think that would be a great committee. I think, you know, we as a board have talked about, you know, the need to expand the segments of our constituency that participate in committees. And if, if we want to include people, then it's up to us to include them. So I actually think, you know, if it was Maura, Brian, Felicia, and Manaz, we'd have great representation. Also knowing that, you know, Brian's a golfer, Felicia, Manaz are not, also keeps a healthy balance, golfer, non-golfer, you know, with the overall composition of the committee, and I think will facilitate, you know, that healthy discussion about the broad use and direction of the building and the property.
We've got a motion and a second. Do, do, we want to change the motion? Do we want to take a vote on the motion?
I do have a separate motion. I mean, you can go ahead with this, but I do have a separate motion if you're going to appoint an a butter, how that would, you would have to also include the exemption piece.
And I was going to ask you in the recommendation here, comments, you actually had two separate motions, one for not, for member and non-member. I think Ian made one full motion. Did you, did you need them separated, or is that a matter? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't put in indefinite term, which would have to put in there, but indefinite term is pretty definite by the charge, but.
Yeah.
It's tough. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I, I had to say, I mean, for me, I would, I would, I was on the fence between Felicia and Manaz in bringing different things in. I think a balance, I think pulling people in is absolutely important. I think you can go too far and not have enough that, you know, it's, it's a tough combination, so I just, I, I struggle with it.
I guess I don't feel it's going too far. Maura brings tons of experience.
No, I think with your, your motion, I mean, your, your second was, I think if I heard it was to include Manaz and remove Skip.
Yeah.
Was Skip on the most recent, not that this factors in, but I'm asking, the most recent, the master plan update, the most recent, not the original master plan from like 10 years ago. Right. That's what you're referring to? I think he put that in his packet, sorry. Sorry, let me just.
He's been a planning board member, master plan committee, open space committee in the past.
But I thought there was a reference. Patrick said it, and then I feel like I just saw.
I thought open space and planning board was what I caught.
Definitely master plan, but he was on the planning board for the last master plan, I believe.
Yeah. Sorry.
He said, he said, he served two terms on the planning board and helped with the master plan update and remained interested in helping the town as it grows and adjusts. That was a very big committee, so I don't remember.
Okay, okay.
It was this one or the prior one?
So, can I amend your motion?
Oh, I can amend my motion.
Okay.
Why don't you amend it? So, I mean, to get, well, I'll, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a new motion?
So.
Which one are you withdrawing?
My, my initial motion, motion, which was Terry O'Day, Skip Ashton.
You're withdrawing all of them.
I'm withdrawing the whole thing.
So I would move.
Well, I don't know if I can do the, can I do that, though? Because we had it seconded.
Oh, I.
We can just vote, vote it down?
You concur.
I concur with the removal of the motion. Is that okay? Is that okay? Oh, my God.
I don't know. I guess so. Go ahead.
All right. All right. So I would move to appoint Terry O'Day as the golf club member. I don't have it right in front of me. I apologize for indefinite term.
The current member of the Westboro Golf Club.
Yes, thank you. And I would move to appoint Maura Shuni, Brian White, Felicia Weitzman, and I'm not going, Manaz.
Halloway.
Halloway, thank you. I had the wrong last name. For, who are non-members of the Westboro Golf Club to the Golf Club Building Use Committee for an indefinite term.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Sean, did you have any thing you wanted to say, or you good?
Yeah.
All right. And we'll take a vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
John?
Edinburgh, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you. Again, we appreciate all of the applicants. As you can see, this is a tough process for us to go through with such wonderful, with such wonderful applicants. And I, again, I'll just reiterate what you've said a number of times, that we encourage you all to continue being involved with the process and making sure that the committee is aware of, you know, your, your desire to provide a voice into, into those recommendations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on here. Thank you for the board for getting through that. Agenda item 10, request to concur with the town manager's appointment for animal inspector.
So the good news is, we mistakenly gave this item 25 minutes, so you're still on track.
If we get done in a minute.
Yeah. So this is an annual appointment. According to the charter, the appointment of the animal inspector is by the town manager with concurrence of the select board. I have appointed Melinda McHendrick as the animal inspector, and then also.
Keith Elms?
Yep. Keith Helm, Keith Elms, who's the ACO in Shrewsbury, who does backup work as the animal inspector. So just looking for the board to concur with those appointments.
I will move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Melinda McHendrick as the primary animal inspector and Keith Elms as the backup animal inspector for a term to run from May 1st, 2023, to April 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just again, I just think Melinda does a phenomenal job.
I echo that. All right, roll call, vote.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you. And we're actually four minutes ahead of schedule, because the next item is 20.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. April 15.
Can I ask a question about the golf club committee? What would be the process? This just goes back to the number of people. So we just appointed, it's been a little, little bit of time since everyone interviewed. If someone said, oh, God, something's come up, and like, I can't make that commitment, or the, or the committee finds that that person can't make that commitment, would that come back to this board?
Yeah, it has to.
It has to.
It was just like any other vacancy that would occur on a board.
Okay, thanks. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item 11, request to appoint Marilyn Taylor to the council on aging.
So there's currently two openings on the council on aging, one with a term ending June of '23, and one with a term ending June of '25. This letter, this agenda item recommends appointing Marilyn Taylor for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
So I would just say that I know Ms. Taylor has attended at least one council on aging meeting. She provided a letter to us, pretty extensive background in other organizations, and she was asking questions at that, the meeting where she was just a guest, so I think she'll do great.
Registered nurse, I think it's a, it's a great.
Yeah.
Her background and her interests definitely will benefit the committee.
Yep.
Want to make the motion then, Shelby?
Yes, I'd love to. So I move to appoint Marilyn Taylor to the council on aging for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No? All right, roll call, vote.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes.
Just thank her for reaching out and applying.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Taylor, for reaching out. We wish you all the success in assisting the council on aging and all the work that they're doing. Thank you.
Lots more to come with the senior needs assessment.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, good stuff.
Yep.
All right. Next item, item 12, request to change the municipal domain name change.
So with this, with the technology upgrades that were approved at town meeting, we have this request to change our domain name to, from town.wesboro MA.us, which is very long to say when people ask us our email addresses, to westboro MA.gov. I did receive a question from a member asking if we would retain our current domain so that it would forward, and we will, we will do that, so looking for authorization to move this forward.
I will add with the upcoming migration to a single email system.
Yeah.
On Microsoft 365, now is the perfect time to do this.
Yes. Mr. Technology, would you like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to authorize the town manager to execute all documents related to changing the West, changing Westboro's domain name to westboro MA.gov.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Makes total sense.
All right, seeing none, roll call.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes.
So I just finally figured out all those, what one comes in order, and now I'll have to unlearn it. Perfect.
People make the joke, they're like, dot, dot, North America, dot world, dot earth.
I just always knew it was increasing in size.
Yes.
Mark's a busy boy, because all the, all the aliases that need to be created.
You can do it at the domain level and make it automatic.
Absolutely, yeah.
Hey, let's keep moving this along here.
Yeah, all right. All right. Item 13, approval of meeting minutes of March 16th, 2023.
I move their approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. And we'll move on to item 14, town manager's report.
Just reminding the board and the public that the plastic reduction bylaw will go into effect on April 17th. That was an amendment to the plastic bag reduction bylaw that was amended at the October town meeting, so that was the six months following that meeting is when it goes into effect. The Public Health Director and Economic Development Corner have been working with impacted businesses since the bylaws passing. Communication sent, was sent out, is being sent out this week as a reminder to businesses, and a reminder also that they have the opportunity to come before this board for a waiver at the April 11th meeting for a period of time, depending on what their need is. The select board retreat will be on Friday. It's the annual goal-setting retreat, related to communications, as was announced at town meeting, we'll be putting out a quarterly electronic newsletter beginning this spring. And then also, I have appeared twice now on Shelby's show, the 01581 Let's Talk, so spending five to 10 minutes at the beginning of each episode. I think the, this time it was kind of like, what are we going to talk about? And I, we probably could have talked for half an hour, so it's a great way to give updates to the community. And then the Sharp Building Shelter, our contact at DHCD has scheduled a weekly call beginning this week, so we'll continue to share updates with the board. And, and just so included on that, those calls are both chiefs, superintendent, and then also the link has been forwarded to our delegation. So they're, they remain involved in the conversation and have. Related to the Recreation Department, the golf course is open as of March 22nd for both public and membership play. Tea times can be made online at westborowgolfclub.com. In the Finance Department, we've had several grants. The School Department got a $50,000 grant for homeless emergency support. Economic Development got a $75,000 grant. We've talked about the earmarks that they received, and then also through the state, so $75,000, and then also $90,000 earmarks. And those are through, I believe, state ARPA funds.
Is that like the wayfinding?
One of the, the $90,000 is the wayfinding, $75,000, I think, was more general into downtown revitalization.
Yes.
We did an energy assessment audit, RFP. Kim, Kim actually did that with our energy advocate, Colin, and Homeworks Energy was selected for the work. The Assessor's Office was recently notified that the Home Rule petition to approve the additional tax exemptions for qualifying senior residents was signed into law by Governor Baker on January 5th. We weren't sure for a while if that had actually gotten signed before he left office, so we were excited to hear that. So that will begin fiscal '24.
That's good news.
And then Youth and Family Services has been busy with an increase for resources, mental health requests and referrals. There was a good turnout for the Human Service Alliance meeting on March 21st. And then on April 21st, from 5:00 to 6:30, Youth and Family Services and the Westboro Police Department will be hosting a family bingo night in the Great Hall, and everyone is welcome.
Thank you, Christie. All right, on to item 15, issues and correspondence. Who'd like to start us off?
My one thing for this evening is, thank you to everyone who attended our annual town meeting, and for those who stood up and spoke for what they believe and what they want to advocate for. It's not always easy to do that in front of a crowd, as well as you're being broadcast on the worldwide web. And so appreciate the attendance, the care and attention to the. And so appreciate the attendance, the care and attention to the, you know, the budget, the activities, the goals and objectives, the moving forward of the town and our community. It was good to see a nice, effective, and respectful engagement in our town governments. Thank you.
Sure. I'll jump in, follow up on town meeting, it's something to, to talk about and maybe with John Arnold when he comes in, but I think as a board, too. One of the things that we always hear is, and we talk a lot about, is taxes, of course, and taxes going up, and there is discussion brought up about tax rates, and we can talk about that on a different time. But really what strikes me is that, as, as much as we try to educate, when we go through town meeting, and basically by the time we get to the budgets, we have done all the raise and appropriating, pretty much we're going to do it. So the tax rate is set before we go into the rest of the warrant on free cash articles, whatever. And I guess I'm wondering if folks really understand that that is what is kind of setting their tax rates? Because what, the way the meeting started, I was prepared to be marking many budgets for questions and discussion, whatever, and like in past years, it isn't there. So it's kind of that disconnect of, of people concerned about taxes, but do they, do they truly understand what, what drives it? And there's a lot of talk about free cash, and really, as we've talked about before, it's, if we had voted all those down, the tax rate wouldn't change unless we decided, well, wouldn't change unless we came back and did a raise and appropriate for those things. So it is a piece, and so just putting it out there is, as we think about the future in terms of education and whatever, is there more continued education, maybe something more with the finance committee or whatnot? I just, I almost wanted to stand up before the votes and just tell people, this is, you know, your opportunity, you know? But I didn't do that, and not sure that would have been the right thing to do. So anyways, something I just wanted to put out, because it, it just, hearing so many people talk about at town meeting, hearing afterwards, and just being cognizant of that. Reminder that the annual Boy Scout Senior Dinner, so this is the pasta dinner free at the Senior Center, is this coming Saturday at 5:00 PM for seniors, just to reach out to the Senior Center to put the name on the list, so they know how many to expect, and transportation, if you need transportation, transportation is available. So let them know that, and there will be transportation provided. Reminder as well about the militia Minuteman New Memorial up at Minuteman Park and the dedication ceremony for that on April 15th at 10:00 AM. Trustees of Soldiers Memorial, along with David Nurse, are planning the ceremony right now. I will put out there that I was asked just to do a thank you to the, as a select board rep, and on the trustees, while we were planning this, although I am now turning that over to Sean as the select board chair representative, but to, just to say thank you to the community sponsors that helped, that basically paid for the monument. But there is a request for a select board member to lead the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the service, so if anybody's interested, let me know. And I told David that I would coordinate, David Nurse, I'd coordinate that for him. I think I reminded folks that former select board member, Lee Emery, is acting as master of ceremonies. She, along with David Nurse, both have relatives that are on that memorial, so it's very appropriate to do that. Again, the event, we're scheduling it for roughly 30 minutes, so it's not a big time commitment, but I think it would be great for folks to show up and right around Patriot State, too, is the, the plan there. And the final thing I had was, we've had a lot of talk about our former resident, who, Dana Quan, who won the multiple Oscars, but there's been a lot of comments, and I know that I've gotten from folks, emails, whatever, that we as a town should try to do something in celebration. I just don't know, and they, they bring back that we did this for Nikki Stone when she won the gold medal, and personally, I don't know what that process is or who would coordinate that, but it probably is something that the select board should, and town manager or spirit committee, something should, should work on, and whether, maybe it's already being done and coordinated, but again, I'm sure others have gotten this as well. I know that there's been multiple.
As liaison, I could reach out to the spirit committee.
You?
I'm liaison to the spirit committee.
Perfect.
At least until Friday.
Yeah. No, that'd be great. I just, I mean, again, it's just, I've had a number of, of comments and that we should be doing something there, so I just wanted to bring it up. That's it.
All right. Shelby?
Sure. So just want to thank those who organized the event last week. Several of the board members here were able to attend the mobile canteen and ribbon cutting ceremony that was a collaborative effort between the Lions Club and the veterans organizations and an organization called Clear Path for Veterans. So that canteen is intended to bring food to veterans in their communities and engage them and make them feel welcome. It's, it's an extension of the work that Clear Path does. So it was a really cool event. It was, we had a really nice turnout from town officials, and I think it was, it was appreciated. So that was, so appreciate that service that will be coming through. I would imagine the, between the Senior Center and the Veterans Advisory Board, that schedule of that roaming canteen will be made available. I, I'm not aware of a schedule yet. And you actually, we didn't coordinate our comments, but I had the same about town meeting and Alan as well. First of all, I want to thank everyone for, there are some tough topics being discussed. There's a lot of energy, there was a lot of energy coming into the building with some of the topics, and I thought everyone handled themselves, you know, really well and, and in a civil manner, and that's what we really expect. So I think we should be proud of our collective work on Saturday. I had also noted that, and Kristi, maybe this is, we extend your 10 minutes to a dedicated show around kind of municipal finance and budgeting and raise appropriation, really, you know, try to help voters understand that. Because while certainly I was not looking forward to lots of questions on the budget, I was anticipating them, and I think that there, there may be some, you know, disconnect in kind of, I don't want to say the things that matter, because it all matters, but that's certainly something that I think, you know, our budget books do a great job of telling that, but people like really have to dig into that to, you know, to understand it. So, and I, I also want to thank all the town staff. I, I think one of the reasons why, though, we may not get a lot of questions is because town staff does a great job preparing, and we've, this board and other committees have brought department heads before them time and time again, and questions and education sessions and summits, and, and so I think that that work is really paying off. So, you know, I can't, can't say thank you enough that, of the work that's being done by our town staff and, and the efficiency in which, and professionalism which our town is run. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Sean, do you have anything?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. Just a couple of quick things. One, so the library building committee met today, and I know the members of the committee wanted to thank the town for their support of Article 12 passed with a strong majority, so that was, I was really glad to hear. And the next meeting of the library build committee is scheduled for the 18th of April, where we'll be walking through the draft of the work plan for what we're trying to accomplish in order to get the quotes that we need to follow up on what needs to be done for the library. And then second, as I was watching the town meeting remotely, I wanted to say thank you to Westboro TV for the tremendous job they do. They really pulled off a terrific job on Saturday, and I'm always grateful for the work of Westboro TV. That's it for me, Patrick.
Thank you, Sean. I want to say I missed you there, Sean. We're, you know, we were looking for you down at the table, so.
We had more room to spread out.
That's right, we did.
So we didn't miss you too much.
All right. So I just had a couple of things, I guess to start off with the town meeting. I want to say thank you to Amber Bach and Brian Callahan from the school for flipping over the auditorium on quick notice from the event the previous night and being prepared, and all the staff that helped do that work. It must have been just a monumental task, as I came in and ate at the morning, ate in the morning, and it was, looked like it was pretty ready to go. I would also just say thank you to them for setting up the babysitting and the food. I got a lot of positive comments on both of those, and I think that really enabled a broader participation in the community for all articles. And then a final note, again, as we, in the future, meet with John to talk about the meeting, again, I always say, John does a fantastic job, and I think he did again this year. I thought the stoplight, which was a new item in the, in the meeting, I think, I thought it was successful. I think, I thought it really helped people understand when they needed to wrap things up, and it kept, kept us moving along throughout the course of the day. I would just say that one opportunity might be somehow, and I don't know how to do this, but to allow those front speaker somehow to see that, because it's behind them, just to keep them moving along. But just, just a comment there, it went really well. And then on the master plan, we, we've been meeting every other week or continuing to make progress. We had Jim Robbins come in and speak to us this week, which helped the team really begin to level set on some of the roles of different departments and how the departments interact together, so that we can better understand how the highest priorities that we're looking at need to be spoken about and worked upon. And then finally, I'll mention the rubber duck derby is coming up by the Lions Club on April 15th at 11:00 AM at Mill Pond's spillway, so take a look at the Lions Club website to get more information in regards to signing up and getting a rubber ducky.
Two, two other quick things.
Sure.
But I forgot to mention, with respect to town meeting, I also want to make sure we call out the National Honor Society students who provided the babysitting service, and when people realized it was going to be needed in the evening, that they dropped what they were doing on a Saturday night and came back in to continue the service through the evening session. So thank you for that. Also want to mention that on April 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Doubletree, is the corridor 9495 Chamber of Commerce's annual business expo. This is actually one of the largest business expos in Massachusetts, not only with the number of local businesses who exhibit, but with the number of attendees. It is free to attend, but you will save yourself a lot of time checking in if you register in advance. You can do that at the Chamber's website.
Thank you, Alan. Kristi, I just wanted to go back. We had these two items. Did we need to make a special motion, or?
No.
No, because you didn't appoint them.
Oh, that's right. We didn't. Let me pass these back down. Thank you. Okay.
Would you like a motion for executive session?
Yes, please. Motion for executive session.
I move we enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighters' union. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Corp., LLC, v Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC, and Lax Media MA LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA, Number 2285 CV01281. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro, v Westboro SPE LLC, Worcester Land Court, 19 TL000768. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE 129 East Main Street, Town of Westboro, v Westboro Retirement Residences LLC, Worcester Superior Court, Docket Number 2185 CV00292. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Residences of Westboro Station/Northland TPLP LLC at 100 Chauztown Meadows Drive, RE Enforcement of Affordable Housing. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of March 16th, 2023.
16th or 14th?
14th.
March 14th.
It was 16th, sorry.
No, it was 16th.
We moved.
We got moved to Thursday.
It is March 16th, 2023.
All right.
I stand by my motion.
Thank you. And is there a, as, as acting chair, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect to the board's negotiating and litigating, litigating position, and the board will not be recommitting an open session after the executive session. Can I ask for a second to the motion?
Second.
Take a roll call vote?
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
EO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you all, and have a great rest of your night.